All right, let's go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. First of all, thank you to the lovely and talented Susan Miyamoto for our prelude music this evening. And our invocation this evening is going to be provided by our city manager, Mr. Aaron Adams, with flag salute by our mayor pro tem, Mike Nigar.
Would you please stand? Bow your heads. Dear heavenly father, we just, we give you thanks for the privilege and the opportunity to convene in this building and govern the business of the city. Lord, we just pray for wisdom and discernment for the city council, for the city staff. Lord, we lift up all of the first responders that are risking their lives across the state in the past month. We just honor them for their heroic courage. And, Lord, we just ask your blessings on this meeting this evening, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stay standing, face the flag with me, and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right, thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comacherro.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Nigar.
Hello, Madam Clerk.
Hello. Councilmember Stewart.
Mayor Ron.
I am here. All right, first up on the agenda this evening, presentation certificate of achievement to Tristan Aiken York Courtney. Are you in the audience this evening? Come on forward. All right, we have a certificate here, and Mr. Nigar is coming around to provide that to you, but we wanted to congratulate you on your achievement, on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of your accomplishment and wanted to hear a little bit about what your project was. And then also, I'm sure, to make note that the pin that we provide is specially created for Eagle Scouts who are here in the city of Temecula. So we're ple- pleasure to have you here with us this evening, and let's hear about your project.
Well, for my project, I decided to go with Rancho Damocitas organization, because I felt like they were a good organization to choose, and I decided to go with a garden box and benches with them, but then they decided that they didn't want that anymore, and they decided that they wanted to build a shed. So I went on and agreed to make a shed for them, and I had to get all the paperwork done and do all the fundraising, which took a long time, and get all of the planning done, having helpers to come and help build the shed, which was a long, strenuous process, but I got it done with.
All right. God, you started off with the bench and made it all the way to shed. It's a good thing they didn't have an annex wing put on.
He's got to unmute you.
Well, we'll just go here. And, Mr. Mayor, it bears mentioning Troop 301, another Eagle Scout. They keep, you guys keep putting them out. So I'm going to read the proclamation real quick. City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. The city council of the city of Temecula commends the outstanding achievements of Tristan Aiken York Courtney of Troop 301. We congratulate Tristan for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of Tristan's accomplishments and wish him continued success in his promising and bright future. It's signed by Mayor Matt Ron and also our city clerk. Congratulations. And then, here's your very special pin.
Thank you.
And over the past 20 years, maybe, I think, 50 of these have given out, would you say? So they're very rare.
At least.
Only for Eagle Scouts. Do you have family here? Yes. Parents, if you want to come up and take some photos, you're more than welcome. You betcha. And take one up of the screen. That's always a good picture. Congratulations, Eric.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and next up, we have a city of Temecula proclamation for the, let's see, presentation on annual community candlelight tribute day. So, good evening, welcome. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read this real quick and have Mike present the proclamation. It's, "Whereas the communities of Temecula, Marietta, and the region come together for the 18th Annual Community Candlelight Tribute to Attend a Special Holiday Celebration for Remembering Those We've Loved and Lost. And especially during the holidays, just as all year long, we miss them, grieve their loss, and honor them with this occasion and special time of remembrance. And whereas we invite the citizens of Temecula and Marietta and all surrounding communities to join together to light a candle during the 18th Annual Candlelight Tribute with special music, poetry, and an inspirational speaker from our local school clubs, student venture, Mr. Monty Sharp. And whereas this year, we feature a newly formed group of bereaved Inland Empire Umbrella Moms facilitated by Diane Priest to provide support for our communities. And this is an opportunity for everyone to show support, comfort, and empathy to all the families of those who have lost a loved one from various recent illnesses or tragedy. Now I therefore, Matt Ron, on behalf of the city council, of the city of Temecula hereby proclaim December 2nd, 2018, to be the 18th Annual Community Candlelight Tribute, remembering those we have loved and lost."
Lynda, I know you want to say a few words. It's always a pleasure to have you here in the council chambers. Would you like to say something?
I just want to thank the city council for always being so supportive for this program, the candlelight tribute, 18 years, and the committee is kind of shrinking, so we're going, looking for new committee members if you'd like to help. But you'll love Umbrella Ministries in our community. They started in 1996, and they have gone nationwide with their support programs to mothers that have lost children, and that's any age, 50-year-old child or whatever, you know. They're just a wonderful, supportive group for the community. So thank you very much.
Here's your proclamation. Would you like to take some pictures?
All right, and might as well stay down there, Mike. We've got one more, but I'm going to invite our other council members down. First of all, I'd like to welcome our visitors from the sister city of Dyson, Japan, joining us this evening at our city council meeting. Thank you. I'd like to also invite up to the microphone Tracy Frick. Good evening. If you could introduce our guests and tell us a little bit about the program.
I'd be happy to. Kombawa, good evening. As you've said, I'd like to welcome you all, or thank you for allowing me to be here this evening, mayor and council members, community members, commissioners, and city staff. I'm privileged to manage the Temecula Valley Museum and the arts, culture, and entertainment team for the city of Temecula. Along with my colleague Katrina Thorson-Vianueva, we have the honor to be the liaison between the city and the Temecula Sister City Association. We have the pleasure of working with Richard Scott, president of the Temecula Sister City Association, and guide Kozo Kaneko, to organize this visit of friends from our sister city Dyson, Japan. The association is always very generous to host these visitors in their homes for a week, teaching them about our city and helping them to get around the town. So first, I want to acknowledge and thank all the host families for their help with this event. While our visitors are here, they will be enjoying many of the amenities here in our beautiful city, including the duck pond, Vale Ranch, Pachanga, and the Great Oak Tree, and also visiting San Diego. They will also be our special guests in Friday's Santa's Electric Light Parade. Though you met briefly last night at the tree lighting ceremony, tonight, we are pleased to formally introduce our guests to you, our distinguished visitors from Japan, and please forgive me if I mispronounce their names, I'm sure I will. Mr. Layo Taknio, he's retired, and this is his third visit to the city of Temecula. Mr. Toshihisha Tanaka, he's retired, and this is his very first visit. Mr. Taka Yamameni, he's a teacher, and this is also his first visit. Mr. Hiromi Katzbai, and he's an engineer, and he visited five years ago. And Mr. Masaka Casio, he's a community services staff member for the city of Dyson. And if you gentlemen would please come up, the mayor and the council would like to give you some certificates.
All right, whatever. Now we need to figure out who's who. Ryo?
I see. I knew it. See, I'm getting it. Hiromi. All right. Katzbai.
Oh, yeah. What are you sitting down there for? Come on up. All right.
Have you taken them to In-N-Out Burger?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. But you will.
Next Friday.
Next Friday, and the Cheesecake Factory. Okay. All right, okay.
And now, really briefly, Mr. Taka Yamamani would just like to say hello and thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mayor Matt Ron, Temecula council members, city staffs, members of Temecula Sister City Association, and Temecula residents. I'm Taka Yamamani, from the town of Dyson, Japan, which is a sister city of Temecula. Also, I'd like to offer my deepest condolences and sympathy to the victims of the wildfires in California, and pray for the speedy recovery from this disaster. We are honored to be attending the council meeting tonight. We just arrived in Temecula yesterday, and we'll stay with the host families for six days. Today, we started from the tour of the city hall after the welcome reception, visited Vara to learn a bit of history about Temecula, enjoyed lunch at American Diner, learned caring and spirit of volunteerism at Jacob's House, and experienced wine tasting in the wine country at the end of the day. Very delicious. We have already been charmed by your beautiful community and people here. We can't wait to learn a bit more and to make new friends. It's short time for us. On November 30, we are attending the Christmas parade. We're far too many seeing you all there. Here are some gifts for you, the city council members. This is Happy. We will at the...
Festival.
Festival.
Very good.
This is Happy.
Japanese festival.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where do we get those jackets like they have on? Yeah, I want one, too.
It's a good question. We've got to find out. Where'd you get the Temecula jacket from? Obviously from Temecula.
You can get those in the visitor's center around the corner here.
Do we get a discount for like a dozen?
By a dozen. All right, well, thank you all for joining us this evening. We look forward to seeing you at the event on Saturday, or Friday as well. All right, let's see, we are moving on to our public comments this evening. Do we have any public comments? No. Well, then, I will dispense with the reading. Let's see, city council reports. Mr. Nigar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just last week, the city lost a very prominent old-timer with deep, deep roots here in Temecula, a gentleman by the name of Bob Morris. And those of you who do not know Bob Morris, he designed the arches that are on both sides of Old Town, and quite a bit of different art and building structures that you can find around town. I'm going to ask later on that we close our meeting in his name. And maybe, Mr. City Manager, I don't know if there's a plaque of some sort that recognizes him at the arches. There might be, but perhaps we can get something up there to make sure his memory's not forgotten.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any others? All right, I do have one thing this evening. Hopefully, there's a slide that pops up. Yeah, so we had a wonderful event this morning, cutting the ribbon on the Temecula Parkway Interchange. So, pretty exciting to finally have that project come to fruition. Hopefully, everybody's starting to see the benefits of it already. I know we've gotten a lot of emails and messages from folks in the community, and so it's a great new addition to our community, and certainly will help improve local quality of life as well. So, pretty exciting morning to finally be there and be part of that event. And I think that was Mike in the picture dressed up as the cone. So, yeah. All right, so moving on, we have items on the consent calendar this evening. All matters listed under consent are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from consent for separate action. Item number one, wave reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of November 13, 2018. Number three, approve list of demands for approved financial statements for the fourth quarter ending June 30, 2018. Item number five, approve purchase license and implementation cost of time and attendance module, mobile access and support services with Tyler Technologies. Number six, adopt ordinance 18-11 to amend Chapter 3.32 Public Works Contract Bidding under Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act to increase minimum bidding requirements and implement recent legislation. This is the second reading. Item number seven, approve a cooperative agreement with the Temecula Sunrise Rotary Club in support of a community Christmas dinner. Eight, approve a cooperative agreement with Temecula Valley Genealogical Society in support of facility use. Nine, approve the purchase and installation agreements with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for Playground Equipment Enhancement and Safety Surfacing at Rotary Park and Temecu Hills Park, PW 18-13 and 18-14. Item number 10, award construction contract to Hillcrest Contracting, Inc., for the roundabout improvements on Inez Road, PW 18-06. Item number 11, approve First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Falcon Engineering Services, Inc., for the Interstate 15, State Route 79 South, Ultimate Interchange, PW 04-08. And item number 12, adopt resolution to establish an all-way stop control at the intersection of Honors Drive and Brassy Lane.
Move approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number 10 for a quick comment. No staff report needed.
Okay.
So move the balance.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on everything but 10. And that passes 5-0. Mr. Nigar.
Yes, and I'll be brief. I see members of Los Ranchitos HOA out in the audience. This is going to award a roundabout at La Paz and Inez. And through, just kind of looking at the situation and talking to members of the association and talking to the contractor who was conditioned to put in the roundabout, we just felt, and Matt, you were working with me on this, that we just felt that it was very important to preserve the rural character of Los Ranchitos. The developer put in about $500,000 for that roundabout, though his center only impacts it about 40%. However, he came to the plate and said, "You know what? I'll put in an additional $10,000 just because I want to and I want to be a good neighbor." And I thought that was really good. In addition to that, Los Ranchitos HOA also did the same thing, however, they're putting in $30,000. The city, in this, if this gets approved tonight, is going to waive fees and application fees, and what else would you call it, Mr. Butler?
We're going to cover the contract administration and the construction materials testing.
Thank you. Any way you slice it, the city comes out ahead, and I think this is real good for all citizens, but especially for the rural character of Los Ranchitos, so I proudly make that motion.
Okay, agreed. And Mike just mentioned, thank you for working out the details at the end there. Appreciate the hard work there.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion in a second? Please cast your votes. And item number 10 passes 5-0. All right, we're going to convene to the Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here this evening. Any public comment? Okay, with none, we'll go on to the consent calendar. Item 13, approve the action minutes of November 13, 2018. Item 14, approve financial statements for the fourth quarter ended June 30, 2018. And item 15, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Contractor Services with Kingdom Causes DBA City Net for Citywide Homeless Collaborative Services Pilot Program.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that motion does pass unanimously. Mr. Hawkins, what do you got for us tonight?
Well, Mr. President, the forecast is for a clear and cool Santa's Electric Light Parade. Oh, there's my slide. So we'll see everyone there this Friday, with over 95 entries, including floats, marching bands, and of course, Santa. The parade starts promptly at 7:00 PM, but of course, you'll need to get there much earlier for another safe and family-friendly event here in Temecula. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Just a question for you. I know they're forecasting some pretty heavy rains for the next day or two, and right now, it looks like clear skies for the parade. But if not, do we have a contingency plan?
Well, we monitor, and if the rain is actually too heavy, then we make a decision whether or not to cancel. But again, we are forecasting a dantastic weather report, and so we're pretty confident it's going to go on.
I'm with you. All right, thank you, Kevin. Mr. Adams, do we have a general manager's report?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any board directors' reports? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to December 11. We have a motion in a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.
All right, so then we move on to opening the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Can we note for the record that all members are present? Do we have any public comments? None. All right, so the only thing we have on the agenda tonight is item number 16, receive and file financial statements for fourth quarter ended June 30, 2018.
Move item 16?
All right, and that passes 5-0. Any executive director reports this evening?
Nothing tonight.
And directors? Nothing. Go move for adjournment, then.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's go ahead and now open the Temecula Public Financing Authority Meeting here. Again, we are all still here. All right. Any public comment? No. All right, then, let's go ahead and move on to item number 17, approve action minutes of November 13, 2018.
Move item 17?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Look at that, so efficient. Government action. All right. Any directors' reports, executive director reports?
Nothing tonight.
Seeing nothing, we... Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I need one more vote on that motion, please.
What?
There we go.
Did it not work? Says it passed.
I thought it was Comacherro. His finger's worn out over the years.
Little of that, too.
All right. What are we doing?
Reconvening the Temecula City Council meeting and moving on to the public hearing.
All right, all right, good, good enough. Jeez, it's been a long year, folks. Okay, reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Moving on to the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to city council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at that time of hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item number 18, approve the universal health system's Temecula Valley Hospital's proposed modification to a condition of approval, planning application number PA 18-1258, continued from last meeting. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is planning application number PA 18-1258 regarding Temecula Valley Hospital. I know we're all very familiar with the location off Temecula Parkway. Just a little history, the Temecula Valley Hospital was originally approved by city council on January 22, 2008, and it opened officially to the public in October of 2013. The application that's actually before you tonight is a modification to revise the development plan, which is PA 10-0194, which was a condition of approval number 27, which currently requires the commencement of construction for hospital Bed Tower 2 to within five years of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the Phase 1 of the hospital building, or no later than February 8, 2019. The applicant has requested that that condition of approval be modified to read that the applicant is requesting that the date commenced construction of Bed Tower 2 be extended to February 8, 2029, so a 10-year extension. The applicant previously met with the hospital ad hoc subcommittee made up of Mayor Ron and Mayor Pro Tem Nigar. There, the applicant presented their need for a 10-year extension to the condition of approval, and at that meeting, per the applicant, the second bed tower is not feasible due to current market conditions, and again, per the applicant, the 10-year extension of the construction date will allow the applicant the flexibility to add new beds based on market demand. Based on that, therefore, staff is recommending the city council approve the hospital ad hoc subcommittee recommendation, approving the modification to the development plan, condition of approval number 27, PA 18-1258. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Temecula Valley Hospital Chief Executive Officer Darlene Winton, and she has some comments for the council.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, city council members. Thank you, Luke, for the introduction. I've been the CEO at the Temecula Valley Hospital since, actually, a year before it opened in 2012. Very proud of the accomplishments of the hospital, and I think we've done the city very proud with our quality recognition and excellent care at the hospital over the last five years. A lot has changed since the initial development of the development plan for the hospital. Specifically, the studies that were done at that time, the other hospital in the region didn't exist, that being Loma Linda, Marietta, so that added another over 100 beds to the community. So that took care of a lot of the need for inpatient beds. Also, a lot of the needs for inpatient beds. to the condition of approval. And at that meeting, per the applicant, the second bed tower is not feasible due to current market conditions. And again, per the applicant, the 10-year extension of the construction date will allow the applicant the flexibility to add new beds based on market demand. Based on that, therefore, staff is recommending the city council approve the hospital ad hoc subcommittee recommendation approving the modification to the development plan, condition of approval number 27, PA 18-1258. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Temecula Valley Hospital Chief Executive Officer Darlene Winton, and she has some comments for the council.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, city council members. Thank you, Luke, for the introduction. I've been the CEO at the Temecula Valley Hospital since, actually, a year before it opened in 2012. Very proud of the accomplishments of the hospital, and I think we've done the city very proud with our quality recognition and excellent care at the hospital over the last five years. A lot has changed since the initial development of the development plan for the hospital. Specifically, the studies that were done at that time, the other hospital in the region didn't exist, that being Loma Linda Murrieta. So that added another, over 100 beds to the community. So that took care of a lot of the need for inpatient beds. Also, a lot has changed in healthcare since that time. Inpatient need has really declined nationwide. Really seeing more of a shift to outpatient development throughout the country. Even the advisory board, which is a national research firm, indicates only a 0.5 percent increase in the need for inpatient beds on an annual basis. So that really doesn't drive the need for inpatient beds. I think the hospital has demonstrated that when there is a need in the community, that we will build. We just recently committed, completed a $42 million project to bring additional services to the community. And so when there is a need that is seen by the hospital, we will certainly bring it to the community. But at this time, there is not a need for inpatient beds, and so I appreciate your request to be accepted by the city council.
Thank you. Darlene, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
You folks have done some expansions recently. Can you just talk just a little bit about the recent expansions?
Sure. We added 28,000 square feet to the hospital. No additional beds, and really what we were looking at was what was the service need. In this community, we are using our heliport predominantly to transfer patients for higher level of needs down to San Diego for services that are offered here. A lot of those needs are advanced stroke care. And so the services we provide now, we're able to do very invasive treatment of a stroke patient by going into the brain and removing the clot as it presents. Those services aren't offered anywhere in this region, and literally, it's 50 miles away before you even get those services. And that was included in the new expansion. Additional cardiac cath services were also brought in, hybrid operating room for vascular care. So a lot of very high technology that brings us up to a tertiary level of service.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any others? No? All right, thank you so much. All right, do we have a speakers this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We actually have five in addition to Darlene. So the next speaker is Dennis Frank, to be followed by Pranav Kachi.
Good evening, Mr. Frank.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, council members. As 35-year resident of this community, long before the city of Temecula was incorporated, and as a businessman, also involved with higher education and economic development in the region, and now I am chairman of the board of governors of Temecula Valley Hospital, I've witnessed a lot of changes in development and growth within this community. The community didn't just evolve, it was planned. As part of that forecast of growth and development, a hospital was a critical factor. And it took almost 20 years from the time we sat down and started talking about the concepts of some, I think some of the council members may know, until the point in time that we got the hospital approved. Temecula Valley Hospital has and will continue to provide state-of-the-art healthcare, not only to the community, but to the entire region. I think as our CEO, Ms. Witten, just spoke about, the growth, the expansions, the $40 million expansion, and the potential of future growth is there. However, the tower was part of an original plan, but as we talked about, alluded to, the growth and development and non-evolution of this community, the tower isn't needed at this time. The monies need to be spent to deliver state-of-the-art healthcare, which we have done with our biplane unit and others. And we respectfully request that the city of Temecula council members approve the delay in the building of that tower. And we thank you personally, as one of you, for your commitment to the community, but also your commitment to Temecula Valley Hospital. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Pranav Kachi, to be followed by Jerry Konchar.
Good evening. Hi. Hello, thanks for having us. So my name is Dr. Kachi. I currently serve as the chief of staff at Temecula Valley Hospital, as well as a medical director of the emergency department. In both of these roles, I've had the pleasure of working with such fine leadership. So we're in the crowd right now. So at TVH and serving the community over the past five years, I've been with the hospital since it opened. There's been a shift in medical care over the last decade to outpatient services and actually lower overall length of stays for patients. Advances in technology have had a significant impact in which services can be provided as an outpatient basis. These shifts are not only beneficial for patients, but also help mitigate the increases in healthcare costs to the community. As a result, physicians partner with hospital leaders to prioritize healthcare services and program needs for the residents in the community. So as Darlene mentioned, our recent expansion, which now allows provision for the most comprehensive neuroscience service program in the region, is an example of the hospital and our physicians partnering to expand healthcare services needed in the community. We are going to promise to continue this partnership so as to prioritize the healthcare needs of this community. Thank you so much. Sorry.
All right.
Questions?
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jerry Konchar, to be followed by Bob Brown.
Mr. Konchar, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Konchar, a member of the Temecula Valley Hospital Board of Governors and recently retired Chief Financial Officer of Pachanga Development Corporation. Hospital construction is most often reported in terms of cost per bed. Hospital construction costs in California is among the highest in the nation, costing nearly $2 million per bed. Hospital construction in California is regulated by the Office of Statewide Health Planning and Development, referred to as OSHPOD. OSHPOD regulations are significant, with project review and approval taking anywhere from six to 12 months, depending on the size of the project. Based on a high cost and a significant time investment, Temecula Valley Hospital has extensively analyzed our community and their need as it relates to expansion planning. We feel it is not prudent at this time to rush into construction until there is a justifiable community need. Without having a community need, an investment of that magnitude at this time will only create additional hospital beds which could sit vacant, which is not prudent for us to continue on this same path. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Brown, to be followed by our final speaker, Ron Bradley.
What a pleasure. City council, my name is Bob Brown. I'm going to give a little bit of history, and I'll give you the reason for it in a minute. I've been in Temecula for 27 years, served on the school board for 17 and a half years. Prior to the school board in Temecula, I served seven and a half years in the city of El Monte on the school board. I've served on the Chamber of Commerce board, I've served on the Boys and Girls Club, I've served on the Rotary Club. So I'm just letting you know my background, because I have no real affiliation with the hospital, other than the fact that I have a big proponent of the hospital and have been since it started and still today. I just want to let you know that as a patient of the hospital, at one time, I served, didn't serve, I spent four days in the hospital, and I really thought that it was the finest quality service you could have ever gotten if you'd have went to any hospital. I got out of there, and I was just absolutely elated with the fact of how I was treated. I think that what the hospital is asking for is not a big deal. A little extension to be able to build an addition to the hospital should be a no-brainer. I think the people that are here today, that are speaking today, have given you the numbers, they've given you the ideas, and I take pleasure in supporting the hospital. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Ron Bradley.
Mr. Bradley, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. It's good to see you all. I think congratulations are in order to a couple of you, but they haven't certified the vote yet, have they? Yeah, that's what I thought. But congratulations, anyway. I'm here speaking as a member of the hospital Advisory Committee. I'm one of 200 volunteers in many capacities at the hospital that provides information to them about what is really needed in the community. We ensure that the consumers' point of view, perspective, and experience are integrated into the service and quality improvement planning for the hospital. And we have the opportunity to be involved in the hospital planning process. And as you've heard, it's one of the most expensive processes in the world right now. And in California, I think we're even at the top of the list there. Through my role on this committee, I'm aware that TVH is assessing community needs and analyzing what services are needed and when to plan for future expansion projects. It is exciting and reassuring to be able to participate in their planning efforts, especially since 20-some years ago, when this was an idea. I was talking about it then, and I'm just delighted where we're at in the city of Temecula. You folks should be really proud of what you've accomplished. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our final speaker. You're welcome to close the public hearing that remained open from the last council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and close that public hearing and move on to council comments. Mr. Nigar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In order to completely grasp this item tonight, it may be beneficial just to go back a little bit in time. Not to tell the whole story, but there was a time when the hospital wasn't here, and we were concerned because we needed a hospital here. And Southwest Healthcare had an approval for a hospital, and their approval was keeping other people from looking here. When it came time to renew their map, we were concerned that they would just continue to hold on to the land and not build the hospital and further keep other hospital providers out of the city. So we put some conditions on them that night. We put a condition that they put up, I believe it was a $5 million bond, that they would be under construction by a certain amount of time, et cetera, et cetera, and that Tower 2 would be under construction by a certain amount of time. That's the condition that we're dealing with today. I think beyond a doubt, the hospital, Temecula Valley Hospital, has proven itself to be not only a community player, but has demonstrated that they're probably one of the best hospitals in the state of California. What are the awards that judge the hospitals? Are they leapfrog? Is that what they're called? So the leapfrog awards, which is the highest award that you can get, correct, Darlene? Right. And you've got that three years in a row now? Five years in a row. And I'm not surprised, because I can personally vouch that because of the care available at the hospital, no exaggeration, it has saved the life of my father-in-law, it saved the life of my wife, and one other person, Darren Hoopengardner's wife, who had a stroke, saved her life because those facilities were there. I think they know how to run their facility. I don't think they're hedging, and we certainly want to help them succeed. So I have no problem with amending the condition. Last thing I want to mention, some have said that, well, the helipad is supposed to go on the second tower, and this will delay the helipad from going to the second tower. And right now, it's in a temporary place. And I just want to say, that's true. And there is an impact of that, of the helicopter flying over. And in fact, I can tell you, it flies right over my house. And it flies at about 300 feet over my house when it's coming in. And at first, it's annoying, until you think about who's in that helicopter, coming or going, and then you find out that a little annoyance is meaningless based on what's going on up there. So I wholeheartedly stand behind this. I appreciate the work of Darlene and our staff. And Jeff, you've worked on this, but lately on the subcommittees, Matt, Ron, and I'm going to move the item.
I'll second and would like to comment as well.
Tom Hare.
Thank you, Mike. I was going to give the whole history, so now I don't have to. Back in 2008, we were more than just a little concerned, because we were a city at the time just about 100,000 people or approaching that without a hospital. And nor was there a hospital in Murrieta or anywhere in the region, really, until you went up the 15 or the 215. We had some trepidation about the entitlements that were granted to UHS out of Pennsylvania, the parent company of Temecula Valley Hospital, because it was so important that we got that hospital. And the conditions that we put on it, Mike, they were onerous. And yet, the management, senior management of UHS agreed, which said something in itself to us that we're serious, we're really going to build this hospital. And they did. And Darlene and the board and everybody else who's here, we had very high expectations, and you far exceeded them. It's tremendously gratifying to me, as I sit here, and really for all of us, but as I have one foot out the door, and I look back at the accomplishments that we've been able to do together, this is right on the top of the list. And if you didn't perform, we'd have come and got you. But you did tremendously well. And the same conditions that existed in 2008 that made us so intent on making sure we tied you up to build the hospital don't exist today, because you're here, you're performing, the need is being met. We all have stories about those of our loved ones or friends or relatives whose lives have been saved, or certainly the quality of their lives improved because that hospital is there and because you run it so beautifully. I had the privilege of serving for three years on your governing board. The first three years the hospital was open, so I got a real inside look. And I know I'm not supposed to say anything, so I won't. That's proprietary information. But what I did see for sure was the fact that this is a very, very caring facility that puts the patients first, and along with that, the families as well. Tremendous job. You're a real, real credit to this community, and I thank you. That's it.
All right, Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we knew that we needed a hospital so desperately, and UHS came forward, I think there was some concern, because we had UHS products in Murrieta and in Wildomar. And that was part of the discussion. But UHS was so forthcoming in the things that they wanted to do with this hospital, and that would set it apart. And I think the result has been a hospital that I don't think, none of us could have even dreamt that it would be this good and this excellent. And I can tell you that my husband has been a customer on several occasions. And of course, I was right by his side for the whole time that we were there. And from, to a person, every person that met us, greeted us, cared for us, checked us in, checked us out, followed up by calling the house one day, two day, three days later, you know, that type of commitment to exceptional patient care really does set the hospital apart. And so when we heard about the expansion, the 28,000-square-foot expansion, and the equipment that was being purchased to facilitate the procedures in that expansion, state-of-the-art equipment that at the time that it was dedicated and the ribbon was cut, one of those machines was the only one in the country that was up and running at the time. And they allow surgeons to, during surgery, visualize the field in three dimensions in living color. And we saw simulation on a couple of those machines, and it's unbelievable what doctors are able to do now, simply because of the commitment that UHS and Temecula Valley Hospital have made to the community and to their patients. And going beyond that, they have been more than a hospital. They have hosted gatherings, they're present at gatherings, they participate in our health fairs, they participate in so many different types of events. And Darlene serves, in addition to everything she does at the hospital, she also serves in volunteer positions and supports nonprofits. So really, Temecula Valley Hospital has become part of the community, and how we ever got along without you, we will never know. But we can't thank you enough for all you've done, and we look forward to even more surprises and stellar, stellar patient care. So I would say that 2029 is just around the corner.
All right. Well, I'll just close out by thanking you again for the tour of the hospital facilities. Truly remarkable. You know, I have to say that, you know, what you've built for our community is one of a kind, really. You know, great partner with our community, like the council members said, but also really just an outstanding facility. And, you know, I think, Bob, you were the one that said it in your comments, was this was a no-brainer in a lot of respects, right? I mean, you know, look, the anticipated growth and need... I mean, you know, look, the anticipated growth and need within the region and our city hasn't met the demand to have a second tower put up, you know, and frankly, it was a simple, you know, thing for us to look at it and say, well, why would we condition you and hold you to the condition of building, you know, something that's going to be underutilized or unutilized at a cost of, you know, literally millions of dollars, I mean, just to put the hospital at risk. It didn't make any sense. It's a different time than it was, you know, like the council member said earlier, and, you know, I think today, we all recognize that. With regard to the helicopter pad, I think we've addressed those issues thoroughly. Sorry we had to delay the decision on this for a couple of weeks, but know that, you know, we take those concerns very seriously, and I think Mr. Nigar, you know, expressed it well, but certainly in the life of a hospital, 10 years is, you know, still a very short period of time, and we expect you guys to be here for as long as that building is going to stand, and so, you know, it's a true asset, and so we expect to, you know, see that tower built eventually, because we know the demand will increase, but now isn't the time. So this is in my mind, as a member of the subcommittee, a fairly simple decision to make. So seeing no other comments, looking for a motion.
Move approval.
I think you have them.
Oh, we have them, all right. Let's go ahead and vote then, please. And that passes 5 to 0. All right, let's go ahead and move on to, let's see here, commission. Mr. Sullivan, what do you have for us this evening?
Nothing to report tonight.
Nothing, all right. Mr. Yeomans?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Mr. Schwank?
I'm going to have something to say this evening. Good evening, Mayor Ron, and council members up. This is truly a magical time in our city. Last night, we lit our Christmas tree, our annual Christmas tree lighting, officially sort of kicking off Winterfest.
And it went off without a hitch.
Yeah, it was beautiful. It was perfect. Should have started at 99, I do think. But we've got a lot going on, so we've got breakfast with Santa, we've got the parade coming up. There's just a ton of stuff going on, the ice rink in Old Town. This is just a beautiful time in our city, and I want to encourage everyone to get out, enjoy it, and just spend some time with friends and family, and finish out this year in a nice way. That's all.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, public safety, we have our chief McConnell joining us this evening. How are you?
You're always prepared. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. I have the stats for the month of October. We responded to 7,340 files during that time period, and of those calls, the 7,300 includes also traffic. Our officers issued 1,660 traffic citations, excuse me, citations, in addition, 151 parking citations. We also investigated 79 traffic accidents, which all ranged from major injury-type accidents to our minor fender benders. We had 67 DUI investigations that were conducted, and our commercial enforcement officer actually issued 25 citations. Our quality of life issues, we had 61 calls for service that involved panhandling or loitering in the area. And then our homeless outreach team actually made 24 files where they were able to provide services for our homeless population. And that is all I have for tonight.
All right.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So what is the commercial enforcement citations? What were they?
Okay, so you know the big rig trucks that cross through town? So we have an officer that is 100% dedicated to inspecting those vehicles, so he stops them all day long, and those are the number of citations that he wrote for the month.
All right, and for those folks who always complain about the red light violators who drive through, I know you guys are on it, I know, you know, it's a constant issue, but 1,660 citations written, that's tremendous.
And that number is actually low, because we had two of our motor officers that were injured, so that number dropped by about 400 citations. But again, remember, the rain is coming, so slow down and use caution, the streets are going to be slick.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, city manager, anything for us?
Mr. Mayor, just one thing. Really wanted to kind of piggyback on what you shared at the beginning of the meeting in terms of the I-1579 South, Temecula Parkway Ultimate Interchange, because I'd like to commend Pat Thomas, the entire Public Works team, all the public information, social media pushes for 18 months, working with the business community. We know it was challenging out there for a bit, but here's a capital project that's been nearly two decades in the planning process, and I know that's terrible to hear that when I say that, but was necessary in going through the appropriate federal and state approvals, and then building it in 18 months, over a $50 million capital project. So we know Temecula is safer today than it was yesterday with the opening of that interchange, and we look for many more improvements along the 15. So again, just shout out to Pat, your team. Ovlin, as project manager, did an incredible, credible job managing that project, so good job.
Fantastic. And city attorney report?
We had a closed session tonight, but we have no reportable action under the Brown Act.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to adjourn this meeting in the name of Bob Morris. His signature, his artistic work is all over Old Town, and he will be sorely missed.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.